Good evening to everyone. Thank you, everyone, for coming out. At this time, I would like to call our meeting to order, May 2nd, Tuesday, May 2nd, 2023. Just want to thank everybody for coming out to our monthly school board meeting. We moved it up a week because of the election next week, and so we moved it up a week. Want to thank all of those who may be live streaming with us. Thank you for joining us. At this time, we're going to turn it over to Dr. Cullum for our impact student recognition.
Thank you, Mr. Ackland and board members. Tonight, it's hard to believe it's already May, and graduation is just around the corner. But we're excited tonight to celebrate a high school student, Addie Ellis. And here in just a minute, she'll join us for the pledge. But first, we have a video to introduce Addie Ellis from the high school.
My name is Addie Ellis. I'm a senior, top grade at Conway High School.
Tell us some things that you like to do for fun.
I love to dance. I'm on the dance team here at Conway High, and I also dance competitively at Rock City Dance Center in Conway. I am part of the Carrying Cats Club. I'm very passionate about them. I visit them every day during fourth period. My son Paul.
My name is Ms. Haynes, and I am a teacher at Conway High School. I have had the privilege of knowing Addie Ellis through Carrying Cats. Addie volunteers in my classroom every day. She spends a lot of time with my students and has really enriched their lives and their senior years. And I've really enjoyed watching her befriend my students and how she's impacted them. She spends a lot of time in there, making sure that they're included in senior activities with their peers. She's gone with us on several field trips and things, and she's always such a joy to be around. She makes all my students feel like they're a part of everything that she takes them to, and we are very thankful to have Addie.
I'm in a lot of, like, art classes, so I love to draw and, you know, paint. It's fun.
So I'm Ms. Bradlin here at the high school, and I'm Addie's Painting One teacher. And Addie is just a wonderful student for me. She's really a standout. She works super hard for me in class. She comes in and just gets to it. She is always willing to make changes if she needs to. She's great with corrections, super sweet, super respectful, and all her classmates just love her. She's joyful every day, comes in with a smile, and she just, she just makes our classroom, you know, just bright and happy.
Would you join me in congratulating Addie Ellis? Addie, would you come forward, please?
If you would all stand and join us for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Board, next, we have another very special recognition. Ms. Kelly Gordon is going to come forward. We have another state championship basketball team to recognize tonight, so I'm going to let Ms. Kelly Gordon introduce our state champs.
All right, we're going to have them come in and line across the front. We've got several people here with us tonight from Conway High School. All right, so first of all, I would like to introduce the Unified Basketball State Championship Team of Arkansas. So we're excited tonight to get to introduce this team and many of the people that get to work with them. Unified basketball is a sport that promotes social inclusion through shared training and competition. Training together and playing together is a quick path to friendship and understanding. And I think everybody on this team has developed as people, working together. One of the things that we want to kind of share with you tonight about their road to the finals is, first of all, they had not practiced together prior to the first game. So they went into the tournament this year. This was new. We haven't had a unified team in a few years, especially since pre-COVID. We started in BB, won two games against Greenbriar and Valonia to secure the number one seed, went to Valonia, played against Lincoln last year's state championship to head to the finals, and then got to go to Hot Springs, played against Potsville, and won the state championship. One of the things that stood out across the state as this team went about is that we were always putting our athletes first, that we had good partners, and making sure that they all worked together as a team to proceed to the finals. This allowed our athletes to shine and build confidence. And some of our other people who are joining here today are part of our Carrying Cats Club at Conway High School. It promotes inclusion for our special needs students. It provides a buddy program, monthly inclusion, as well as working with Special Olympics. And we'd like to welcome them all to the board meeting tonight to celebrate.
All right, if y'all can squeeze in as much as possible, we want to get everybody in the picture. Come on in, Kelly. You may have to kind of turn sideways a little bit.
All right, we're going to need a couple rows. One, two, three, and one more.
Y'all say say ten. We had a very exciting March Madness run here in Conway, so again, another great group of kids. And thank you, guys, and thank you, coaches and parents, for being a part of that. Mr. Ackland, that concludes our impact awards tonight. For the board.
All right, congratulations to our Unified Basketball Team. Board, moving right along, at this time, we have all had an opportunity to read over our consent agenda. Does anyone have any questions? If there are no questions, I need a motion to approve the consent agenda. Need a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, the ayes have it. Dr. Cullum, back to you, superintendent's report.
Thank you, Mr. President. Tonight, we have a class of 2023 update, and I'm going to ask our high school principal, Mr. Buck Bean, to come forward. You also have in front of you tonight, board, your end-of-the-year yearbooks, and they are beautiful. And so enjoy those, and I'll let Mr. Bean give us a 23 update.
Sure. Board, thank you for the opportunity to be here tonight, a central office administration and guest. Right now, our seniors are, today was their last official day. We have implemented semester tests, so for our seniors, we're giving semester tests on Thursday and Friday. Now, we authored an incentive this semester, like we did in the fall semester, and it was centered on academic performance, so grades, and also attendance, with the underlying understanding that the more I'm at school, the more opportunities I'm going to have for the learning, and so more of that, you know, should stick. A lot of our seniors took us up on that, because as you can imagine, they are ready, and we're glad that they are. Right now, as of May the 2nd, at 6:09 PM, we have 678 students currently scheduled to graduate. That number will grow. We have some that are going to take semester test, and we've got some that are finishing up, some hanging credits that are out there, so that number will grow. But we are looking forward to a graduation practice on May the 18th at War Memorial Stadium, 9:00 AM, and then the ceremony on May the 21st, War Memorial Stadium, 7:30 PM, trying to beat the heat there. But that is the latest on the class of 2023. Okay? All right. At this time, I would also, and you should have there at your seats, the 2023 Conway High School Yearbook. I've got a couple of our, Ms. Bratton, who is our yearbook sponsor for Conway High School, will have a few words about our yearbook, and she is joined by junior staff members, Ms. Ellie Matthews, and then Mr. Kendall Watson. So I'm going to let Ms. Bratton tell you a little bit about this year's yearbook.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Hi. The book that you have in front of you has actually started last spring. Every spring, the juniors start looking for how they're going to tell a story that they don't know yet, because it happens as we work. So this year, to sort of contrast with last year's big logos and graphics and bright colors and fun fonts, we just wanted to tone it down a little bit. They chose a minimalist design and color palette because they wanted the students and their stories to be the center of attention. The attitude they looked at the book with was, we can't tell our story if you're distracted by in-your-face graphics or big crazy font. So it's pretty plain, but it was, that was the goal. Let's Be Clear was created with the goal of eliminating the clutter, both literally and design-wise, in order to show what a wampus cat really is. And nothing really shows that like the yearbook staff, which is why I had them come with me. I've got athletes, thespians, debaters, honor students, they've got jobs, busy lives, families, all the typical stuff that a high school student endures, but they spend their year, hundreds and hundreds of hours, to put that together as a gift for their peers. It's the only school project that the whole community takes home with them, so that's a lot of pressure. It's a gift, and they put a lot of energy into it. They always rise to the challenge because they think it matters. We try to be trendy, and we try to catch our mistakes. We do better in some areas than others. But we were never going to make the perfect yearbook, but you've got our best work this year. If you want a professional publication, there are lots of magazines, but if you want the heart and soul of Conway High School, it's right there in front of you. This year's book, it was a hard book, because it was a hard year. On page 139, we dedicated the book to the memory of Ms. Corey Bartholomew, who was a resource for us, just always helping. So that's special, makes this book unique for us, makes it matter a little more. But it's a great book, and we're really proud of it, and I'm proud of the kids. I wanted them to come so you could put some faces with the work you're looking at. The book has already received 14 awards at the state level.
Wow.
It was named an All-Arkansas Yearbook, so we're super proud of that. And nationally, the staff is a gold-level program of excellence. So we're proud of it, we're happy to present you with it, and we hope you enjoy it.
Thank you so much. It's beautiful. Thank you. Thank you. All right, board, next, we have a SOAR grant update. The district was awarded a grant from the state, and I'm going to ask Ms. Heather Newt to come forward and present that information. We're very excited.
Board, thanks for giving me the opportunity to speak to you just for a few minutes tonight about an exciting opportunity that our district has. The way this works is the federal government gives our state some money, basically, and then the state then awards money to districts. So the way we have to get that is we have to write a grant. It's pretty extensive, requires a lot of research and a lot of input, but we applied for the maximum amount of money that we could get, which, based on the size of our district, was $200,000. So we were awarded the whole $200,000 for improving literacy outcomes for Conway Public Schools students. So yes, we are very excited. The state recognizes that districts need assistance when it comes to purchasing high-quality instructional materials, because those are very expensive, something our teachers have also indicated as we've been on feedback visits with them, is they are looking for a new, more comprehensive resource for teaching phonics. After they've been trained in the science of reading, they know better, and now we do better, right? So they recognize that need. So our next step in this is that on Thursday afternoon, we have a representative from each of the nine elementary campuses to come over and look at some samples of products that appear on the state-approved list for science of reading, and then a decision will be made, and I will get with Ms. Robyn Keane, and we will get those materials ordered for our teachers, and we will also provide professional development for our teachers so they have training to utilize those materials with fidelity. And I want to thank Dr. Cullum for letting me apply for this grant, and thank Ms. Keane for all of her assistance, because this does require a lot of, you know, extra work on her part. So we're very excited, and we're ready to move forward with this, so.
Thank you, Ms. Newt. Heather did an awesome job. I want to give her a hand, too, for putting the work in on this grant. Thank you very much. Board, my final update tonight is K-12 Insight update, and I've asked Dr. Lasker to present. Mentioned this at the last board meeting. This is kind of a community engagement project that we've embarked on. I'm real excited about. It's a company that I've seen at different companies that we've worked with. They work around the country, and they've presented at different conferences. But in short, they're going to be coming to Conway at the end of May, and so Dr. Lasker is going to kind of update us. What's the activities? What's the outcomes? And kind of how does that work? So, Dr. Lasker.
Okay. In light of some of the issues and concerns brought before the board from our community this year, Dr. Cullum wanted a way to get communication from our patrons in another way. He searched for a non-biased, third-party entity to collect data and to assure participants anonymity and confidentiality. K-12 Insight is an organization that works, as he said, with voices within K-12 education throughout the country. They have worked with thousands of parents in school districts. From these conversations, it helps to create authentic dialogue that helps school districts make informed decisions on behalf of all stakeholders. Conway wants the feedback from our community. So we're hosting focus groups with parents, guardians, staff, and students on Wednesday, May 24th, and Thursday, May 25th. These groups will help provide insight into stakeholder experiences, and we want to hear from you. Email invitations will go out to random parents and staff members, inviting them to participate. Our goal in this community is to ensure that our community understands that Conway Public Schools are willing to listen and discover ways to create a consistent and meaningful two-way dialogue between the community and the district. So these emails will go out Monday, May 8th, and then they will go to random people in the community, random teachers. We don't know who they are. We're going to let them handle it, and then they're going to get us the information back, and we'll go from there.
Thank you, Dr. Lasker. Any questions on any of those information items tonight, board? If not, Mr. Ackland, turn it back to you. Thank you, Dr. Lasker. Thank you.
Board, does anyone have anything they want to say? Kudos to you, Dr. Cullum, for being brave enough to do something like that. That's awesome. That's awesome.
I'm excited.
Excited to hear the feedback on that. Okay. Yes. So let's see here.
I thought I'd just stay here.
You're good.
You want to announce me? I'm good.
So, Dr. Lasker, next, I guess, next, the 2023-2024 handbook.
Yes.
Okay.
Okay. So the handbook committee met April 21st, and those attending were Heath Dow, Ginger Campbell, Pam Ferguson, Stephanie DeForre, Brad Edders, Melinda Francis, and Anna Sheestl. These administrators brought feedback from their students, parents and guardians, and faculty. The suggestions are not building-specific on this handbook, but a broad and applicable across all district campuses. Each administrative representative gathered the review, proposed revisions and suggestions from their respective buildings. We also meet with the Personnel Policies Committee, and they go back and get feedback as well. So this handbook gives us guidance across all grades in the district, and it's aligned to the school board policies. There were a few changes this year, not many. Let's start with the first ones. Board, you can follow through as I go along. We want to take the administrative names out of the handbook. We just want to use titles. We have names, and they keep changing, so every time they change, by the time a parent looks at that, it may not be the right person. So we're going to take that out, so that's why you see those highlights. On page six, the district has issued devices that need to be updated. They break. And so we want to do a $20 one-time fee, which is an insurance, beginning with, we began that this school year, and so it's going to carry on. We want to make sure we are giving a good faith effort when our devices fail on us, that we give parents an opportunity to get that redeemed. On page nine, questioning of students. All questioning shall be conducted in private with an official school representative, principal, or designate present. We want to add the words "if allowable," because a lot of time, law officials do not allow administrators to be present at that present time. But we want to make sure that every reasonable effort will be made to have a parent or guardian present. On page 13, Mr. Ashcraft, or Coach Ashcraft, would like to raise the prices of all sport passes for adults from $100 to $120, and reserve seats at the high school varsity football to $75. Adult season passes will be raised to 50. This is very comparable to other 7A schools, and so we are really far behind, and we need to catch up with that. Prices, all prices have been raised, and we need to make sure we're doing the same. AMI days that you heard about, Alternative Methods of Instruction. This was discussed in our meeting, but because we're not sure what's going to happen next year, believe it or not, what the LearnZAC is going to say about this, we do know that when we have inclement weather and things happen, we're going to be out of school, but we just don't have the wording right. So we're going to leave that as-is for now. On page 21, there are two classes that are not present in the junior high school course catalog, and they need to be added. One is psychology, and the other is Chinese. These were omitted, and we need to add those. Page 24, school suspension with recommendation to expel. Under that title, we would like to add tasers. We do not normally, normally, excuse me, language, our teachers, we don't add things, because we can have a list this long of things that kids cannot bring, but the school administrators felt like tasers were popping up in the school a little bit too often, and they're very dangerous, so we'd like to add that. About turency, on page 26. A court referral will be submitted after 10 turencies. That needs to match a policy 4.7. It says six, so we need to change that to 10. We would like to remove a paragraph that is old, under illegal drugs. This paragraph states that students will not be able to make up work when they're suspended. That is untrue. We changed that last year, two years ago, that was left in there. We need to make sure we take that out. Dress code issues. We spent the majority of our time talking about dress code. That probably didn't come as a surprise. The students would like to wear more pajamas, more holes in their pants above the knee, and more spandex. Those only came from teachers. I'm joking, though. No, they have a lot of things that kids want to wear. Things and times change, but because we need to make sure that we're not restricting a high school student from an elementary student, we felt like it's left to the campuses right now to figure out how that looks or what that looks like. We're not going to wear anything that's inappropriate, but we felt like we're not going to touch dress code right now. We think that it's been, it's not a major, major issue on campus, at least to the adults. So the students are coming to school, and they're looking presentable. And if they're not, the principals and administrators are taking care of that. I'd also like to thank the committee for their hard work on this. It is not an easy task. They take up their time outside of testing, it's testing time, to come up and to talk with their parents and students and their faculty about the changes in the handbook.
Would anyone have any questions? Dr. Lasker.
Dr. Lasker, just one question. We're talking about the increase in sporting event prices.
Yes.
What about entry at the gate for our sporting events? Would we see an increase in those prices?
That wasn't brought to me for that. I think that that's run by, maybe run by AAA, so it may be something that they can't regulate at this time. So I'm not sure if Conway can.
Conference sets that.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Lasker.
All right, Mr. Black.
All right, good evening, board, guests, Dr. Cullum. I'll be brief, but I don't know if everybody realizes we had a rather large tree fall on the building a few weeks ago. If you didn't look quick, it was gone in about eight hours, and that's why I'm up here today. I want to throw out some thank yous and kudos to some folks that, who put that up there? My name got put up there unbeknownst to me, Ms. Donna, or Paula, whoever did that. That's not up there for me. I want to make sure that we thank the right folks. So I've got a list of folks, but I'm up here to make sure that our maintenance team, number one, Bruce Harrell, come on, Bruce, come on in. Come on, guys. They're waiting out in the hallway. And if I forget anybody, you let me, you let me know. And also, Jason, you let me know. But our maintenance team, they did a fantastic job. Bruce and his crew, they do a tremendous job all over the district. If you go around and you take a look, and this was no different. We had a situation where a tree fell on our campus on a Friday night. Was it Friday? Saturday night. Saturday night. See, it was so quick, I thought, you know. Saturday night, and by Sunday morning, we were rocking and rolling. We had the tree removed, and they're starting to do work with NavHoltz on figuring out how we're going to get it knocked out and get it done quickly. We had two employees that had to be moved within the building to look at the tree and the size of tree that fell on our building. Granddaddy said they don't make them like they used to. If you look to the south, down here on this side of the building, the steelwork, that's a good place to go if we have any storm situations, not this side of the building. We aren't safe on this side of the building, but that's looking good down there. But I want to make sure I go through real quick, and Bruce, you help me. I'd like to thank Jason Lawrence. He was there pretty quickly, right after the tree fell. CPS Maintenance Department, led by Bruce Harrell, Tom Vogel and Vogel Tree Service. Did I say that correctly? All right, good deal. Tracy Chambers of NavHoltz, James Lewitt, Mark Solberg, and Alex Graves, all of NavHoltz, Conway Fire Department, Conway Police Department, Conway Corporation, and Summit Utilities. All right, did I forget anybody, guys? Anthony Freed with NavHoltz, Jason Lawrence. Did we forget anybody else? All right, and a few before-and-after pictures, just to see the extensive work that they went into and got done pretty quickly. There's the tree. You'll notice all of those are gone. We went ahead. Bruce helped us make the decision. We didn't want to be in a situation where, have another storm come through and doing this again. So you can see the damage in some of the afters, and you came in the building today, a little bit further down, guys out there working, and I think within another week or two?
Another week.
Another week? So if you would, give these guys a round of applause. Any questions for us or these folks?
Hey, Jason, I just want, I'm sorry. Hey, I just want to say, I came up here about nine that night, and Bruce Harrell and Jason Lawrence were there in their trucks, and they had it under control. And it was late at night, and they were, I mean, it's Saturday night, and they were there on their own time, but I mean, they had it under control. So, man, I really appreciate those two guys.
Absolutely. Thank you all again.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. My grandmother used to say it doesn't take much to just say thank you when somebody does something nice. Mr. Joel Lynn.
Thank you, Mr. Ackland. Board, just real quickly.
Board, just real quickly, part of the accountability law that was passed in 2017 is a pretty major overhaul of the state educational accountability system. One of the provisions in it is that every year, each school create a school action plan that's going to guide their work for the upcoming school year. So what you have, you have a very large PDF there of, you have 15 files contained here, and it's basically each, each school has developed a plan that they're going to focus on for next year. It talks about professional development, they're going to do strategies. Most, most of the plans do address literacy. We asked every school to come up with, with two to three goals. Fortunately, right now, Conway schools, each of our schools is able to develop its own plan. We're not under any level of state guidance, like you read about other schools are in different levels of school improvement. Those schools are told kind of by the state what their priorities are going to be. We're fortunate that all, that all 15 of our campuses are, can be autonomous within the district structure to set goals for them, for themselves. So what you have before you is very, very rough drafts. The odd thing about the law they passed is that the, like the 2023-24 School Action Plan has to be presented at the May Board Meeting, when we don't have the bulk of our data back yet from the state testing. We won't get that back until July. Teachers spend a week during the summer in professional development, planning, and like Heather said, we have new instructional materials coming in. So what you see before you tonight is a very, very rough draft from each campus. As, as we get data in this summer, and as teachers do professional development, what principals will do is they will go in, we make adjustments to these, and then they are posted to the district website no later than August 1st. That's, those are the state guidelines. And some of the data that you will see, if you scroll through these, data that we did pull from, from this year, K2, we have the NWA data in there. We did some formative assessments that schools have used. Some schools are tracking attendance data, so we can, we can put that in there. But this, this rough draft, you will see this change before the fall. And so it's not required to necessarily be approved again, it's just, it has to be presented at a, at a, a board meeting. These plans are developed by classroom teachers in conjunction with their administration, instructional coaches, facilitators. They put, most buildings, they put little leadership teams together to come up with, with these goals. They send them to us at the district level. We do review them, just to make sure again, that they are in line with the overall district instructional goals. But we, we do want to give our buildings autonomy, because we have 15 buildings, they're all very unique, they have unique needs. And, and so as long as we feel like they're making progress, you know, they're going to control their own destinies there. But I do appreciate the, the time that our administrators and our teachers put in to these. It's not just, Mr. Hargis, you remember the old ACIP process? A lot of that was just checking a box. These are not checking a box plans. These are very unique plans that principals and teachers can sit down and say, what are our needs and how can we address those needs? So you can take time if you want to, to scroll through these. And again, they'll be revised over the summer and the final copies will go up in August for this. So any questions about this process?
I got one, Mr. Lynn. Mr. Lynn, sorry. Hey, so I just glanced over these, so this is a generalized statement, but it looked like, when I was looking, that the majority of the schools, 17, 18 and 19, were peaking up. And it looked like in 2019, looks like we had really good scores in a lot of schools. And then COVID hits, and it looks like 21, there was one year we didn't report, I'm sure because of COVID.
Yeah, 20, yeah, we didn't, we didn't test in 20.
20 didn't report, then 21 were way down, or significantly down, looking at the schools. So my question on this, and then 22, it looked like we're starting to bump back it up. So my question is, do we have any data on the schools, on the number, the percentage of students that were at home for that whole COVID year? Do we have a correlation between the at-home percentage and the scores?
Right, that's, that's a good question. And, and the short answer to that is, is going to be no, because the tracking of that, the, the quickness with which we had to implement the stay-at-home, come-to-school, back-and-forth deal, you know, that, that decision was made, you know, the, the schools were told in basically late July that, hey, you had to figure out a way if kids wanted to stay at home, that they could. So there wasn't really a good statewide tracking mechanism. And so when we assessed those kids that year, there wasn't an automatic way to break it down by onsite students and a virtual students. I know some schools, and especially in the, in the, in the elementary schools with, with a smaller number of kids, they could go through and kind of figure out, okay, we know these kids were at home, these kids weren't. Like for the high school, or we know, we tested 700 kids there, 1,500 kids at the junior high, there wasn't a very efficient way to do that. But just as a, as a general rule, of course, you did see students that were onsite tended to make better, better progress, but we did not intentionally track that. No, sir.
Got you. Because I just would think that, when I was just glancing over it, and again, this is a generalized statement, that it seemed like the schools that may have had more people stay at home seemed to not get the bounce.
Right, right. And again, as, as we've talked about in multiple settings, we are seeing, we feel like through the interim assessments we've done this year, especially with that K2 piece, that we are starting to see that growth come back. We're kind of, kind of stabilizing. And that's what, and we, we really hope to see good results when we get those scores back in, in July. Anything else on, on these?
I guess we're good.
All right.
Mr. Joel Lynn.
Yes, back again. So the, we have an action item for you tonight, and I'm glad we have Joel Dean here to, to, to jump in. And if I mess anything up, he can, he can, he can correct me. But the district would like to participate in the E-Rate program, which basically gets us some technology stuff pretty cheap. The E-Rate program, it used to be, schools used it to pay for phone lines. It's actually some of those annoying little fees you see on your cell phone bill every month that you're not sure where they are. Thank you guys for paying them, because it helps schools buy stuff. So we can get a really, really great, you know, we don't pay as much for phone service anymore, so we can use it to buy, traditionally, the district has used it to buy technology infrastructure, networking equipment, wireless things, switches, servers, those big-ticket items, and we can get it at a, what percent discount, Joel?
80% discount.
Yes, 80% discount. And, and all we have to do is for you guys to say, we want to do it. And then Joel and his team do an amazing job of going through and, and doing all the, all the paperwork and getting everything together, and they'll, they'll work with, with Robin in the finance office and be able to get us some much-needed equipment at a very discounted price. So that's what the E-Rate program is. So we'd ask that tonight, you guys consider the resolution to participate in the E-Rate program for next school year.
Okay, Board, any questions?
Maybe a couple of questions. So we've not done this before?
Oh yes, we do it every year.
We do it every year, okay. Nothing different from what we're seeing here than in previous years?
No.
Okay.
Yeah. It's just standard, standard procedure.
Okay, Board, I need a motion to approve the resolution for schools and libraries, universal services, E-Rate for 2023, 2024. This resolution authorizes filing of the Form 471 applications for funding year 2023, 2024, and the payment of applicants' share upon approval of funding and receipt of services. Need a motion? Need a second? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Ayes have it.
Thank you, Board.
Thank you, Mr. Lynn. Ms. Robin Keen.
Good evening, Board, Dr. Cullum. Hope you're doing well tonight. Tonight, I'm going to be bringing a proposal for the 23-24 classified salary schedules. And we're excited to be able to bring this increase forward. I know typically, we have brought proposed salary schedule and raises together for our classified and our licensed, but this year is a little different because of the Learns Act and with the legislative session and not knowing what our foundation funding was going to be. So last month, we were able to bring forward our certified or licensed salary schedule, and as we know, the Learns Act dictated a lot of things that we were doing with our salary schedules, with getting teacher pay of $50,000 and at least a $2,000 increase for our other teachers. And so not knowing exactly what the funding was going to be and the foundation funding for our classified, we felt like we really needed to delay making a decision. So today, we're bringing forth a recommendation for our classified to increase our classified salary schedules by 75 cents an hour. That will be for all of our classified salary schedules, other than for our OT and, OTPT and audiologist. And we are aligning those with our teacher salary schedule. And when I say align those, it's not 100% the same. What that usually is, is like 99.25% of what the teacher salary is for those particular ranges. So we are lining that up like we normally do. So I do want to just make a comment. This year, with the foundation funding, there was a line item added for classified raises. What makes it difficult, I know there was a lot of information about giving classified staff $2 an increase. What makes that very difficult is there's no defined FTEs in the salary or in the funding matrix for classified employees. With our district, we're very, very large, and so it is very hard to, to, you know, determine exactly how many FTEs that is across the state for school districts. So I am happy to say that the full amount that we received, and it was $44, increase in foundation funding for classified raises, we've given it all to our classified staff. And so that is the 75 cent an hour increase. And then as well, we're going to continue to give our experience increases like we do each year. So that's the proposal tonight. And I do want to say a special thank you to our PPC members. We took this to them last Thursday. We wanted to get that introduced to them, and they did waive that 10-day read so we could bring that to you tonight. And they were very great, they were great to work with, our licensed, PPC was very great to work with as well. And so I want to thank them. I want to thank Dr. Jefferson, I want to thank Mr. Black, Dr. Cullum, I want to thank my staff. It's been a big undertaking. I want to thank our legislators for providing raises for our classified employees, and then thank you and all the staff as well. So any questions on the salary schedules?
Board, any questions? All right. Need a motion to approve the 2023-2024 classified salary schedules as presented?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
All right, second. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Ayes have it. Okay. Dr. Keisha Jefferson?
Good evening, Board. I'm here for another action item, and this is the approval of our proposed policy revision. I brought to you, this to you last month for a 30-day read, and there were two options. The first option was the administrator recommended option, and this is the model policy from ASBA. And so we just, we proposed that option, put forward as it's stated from the ASBA. Option two, if you'll remember, was the PPC submission, code of conduct. We had a lot of good discussion there, and the PPC submitted that option. And so I proposed that to you as an option two. Any questions?
Board, any questions? All right, if no questions, I need a motion to approve proposed policy revisions, option one, as presented? All in favor, say aye? All right.
Thank you, Board.
Thank you, Dr. Jefferson. All right, Board, we've got a whole slew of resignations, elections. It's that time of year. Does anyone have any questions about anything that you see on there? Dr. Jefferson, you've been busy. That's all right. Yeah. Okay. Board, I need a motion to approve the personnel recommendations as presented? Need a second? All in favor, say aye? All right. Ayes have it. So at this time...
Mr. Ackland, can I welcome two faces real quick? So tonight, Board, we've got, we've got a lot of these that are familiar faces, and I want to welcome to a new position, but a familiar face. Dr. Tammy Woosley is going to be stepping into the Director of Program and Accountability. So Dr. Woosley, congratulations. Also here tonight, stepping into the Assistant Superintendent role that Mr. Lynn is vacating, and Mr. Lynn, again, we're going to sorely miss you. But we're excited to bring to the district Dr. Andy Ashley here's, he's here tonight. He is a sitting superintendent and coming our way to be a part of the Wampus Cat team. So Dr. Ashley, welcome aboard.
All right. So congratulations to Dr. Woosley and to Mr. Ashley. Thank you. All right. So at this time, we have come to part of our agenda patron comments. And we've got, the only thing I'm going to say about that is you've got three minutes. You've got three minutes, and we're going to ask that Ms. Tammy Marsh, if you would, Tammy Marsh, if you would please come.
Good evening. I spoke in front of you at the October Board Meeting. I am back again to say thank you as a board for standing firm in the wishes of the voters who elected each of you over the last few years. The barrage of personal attacks you withstand on a daily basis must be daunting, but for the sake of our children's educational future, you continue to persevere. I know Linda Hargis both personally and professionally, as I was a student at the junior high when she first began teaching, and then I taught with her at the junior high the first two years of my own teaching career. I know her standards are high, but I also know her heart for students. Yes, she was tough, because she wanted her students to be successful, not just in her classroom, but in life. I know she tried several times to have calm, rational conversations about the various issues, only to have her words taken out of context and perverted to fit someone else's agenda. What appalls me most is the loud cry for tolerance by those who feel oppressed, yet they seem to be the most intolerant of all. Name-calling, spewing of hateful insults, intentional distribution of misinformation about the dealings of this board, the list goes on. Why can we not step back and behave civilly and appropriately for our children to see what it means to be adults, what it means to be responsible and respectful role models for our children to aspire to be? Instead, there are so many angry people everywhere who continue to rage at board members and school personnel, to the point that those on the other side of the issue are afraid to even speak out. We must do better. We owe it to our children and our grandchildren, to our future, to stop the hate and truly practice and live not only tolerant, but also kind lives. The children are absorbing this battle in real time on a daily basis. We wonder why our children can't get along with one another. They mimic what they see. We have a great school district, but it won't stay that way if we keep fighting the way we have since last spring. We are going to see families, families who never thought that they would pull their children and put them in private schools. They're going to use the vouchers and pull their children out of Conway Public Schools and opt for private schools. Enough is enough. It's time for this community to step up, actually exhibit tolerance, and have calm and respectful conversations about improving the education of our children. If that means to agree to disagree, then that's what we as adults must do. Thank you.
Jimmy Kevin?
All right, hey guys, everybody knows that I scrutinize government. That's just what I do. But part of that scrutinizing is to say when you do something right. The bathroom policy and the, the book policies that you guys did is a topic that doesn't seem to be going away. And I'm good with that, and I'll tell you why, because I think it's a great policy. I, I think you guys were trailblazers for the state to go this direction, and I'm very proud you did it. And I bragged on it, so when people continue to bring that up, I want you guys to wear that as a badge of honor. I want you guys to wear that, because you did something, you put together a policy that's fair to everyone. There's nothing bigoted about it. There's certainly nothing genocidal about it. It's a fair policy, and if people step back and look at it objectively, they would see that. So I don't ever want you guys to run from that. That's not Mary Bentley's doing at the legislature. That's Conway School Board that now has that in state law, and I'm very proud of that. And I'm very proud of that. And I say that to people all the time. I also want you to continue your mission on taking indoctrination out of schools. I want you to continue your mission to make education the focus in school. Math, science, reading comprehension, factual history, things like that. I, I'm very proud that you guys do that. And you're setting the tone. You're setting the tone across the state. And you've caught a lot of flak for that, that you shouldn't have caught. But I want you to continue on that mission because it's so important to the children about their education. Parents can indoctrinate all they want. Okay? Parents can tell their kids lifestyles and things like that. You guys are doing the right way about education. I don't need a banned book fairy staff member to come to school. I don't need somebody dressing up in a Donald Trump costume come to school. I need people who are going to teach math, science, and reading comprehension. So as far as it goes on that end, on what you're doing, I'm going to give you an A. And I want you to keep it up. And I want you to keep the tone that you keep up with it. Because at the end of the day, it's not about what grownups think or anything about that. It's about the education of children. Thank you.
Stephanie David?
Good evening. I'm a parent and a member of the Conway community. I'm speaking on behalf of me, my family, and a large group of community members. I want to begin by thanking our current board for their service and their steadfastness in what has become a very tumultuous time in our city. I want to thank Dr. Cullum for his commitment to stay the course when much of his days are filled up with record-setting FOIAs. A few years ago, I participated in a school board meeting and now attend these meetings each month. I want to first bring to the public's attention that prior, that prior to last year's election, to my knowledge, there has never been such vicious attacks against these men and women serving our schools. Since last May, we have had board members doxxed, humiliated on social media, as well as memes created and shared about them. They have been threatened and received vile and inhumane emails. A candidate was followed while campaigning. Campaign signs have been destroyed or stolen, and even more. Secondly, over the past few years, I've watched dear friends stand at this podium with class and professionalism. They are respected members of this community. Here are some of the things that have happened to them. They have been recorded without their permission. Activists have contacted their businesses and employers, and they have written skating email, I mean skating statements on social media. They are using the well-known tactics of the liberal progressive agenda, which is to threaten and to use fear and intimidation to silence our voice. I want to make sure the public in this city understands this. Many of these people boldly self-proclaim that they are disruptors and activists, and they are heavily involved in this election, and the candidates trying to win these seats. There's been zero use of these tactics against any past or present board member or speaker at these meetings, or even current, or either current campaign candidates, the common sense and cordial members of this community. The previous board made decisions during COVID that I fundamentally disagreed with, even though one of my children was harmed because of their decision, and pulled him out of Conway Schools. I never attacked those board members personally. I was never disrespectful. I want to thank our board personally for taking the time to address this wokeism and cultural war and the influence of indoctrination that is sitting at the doorstep of our schools. If you are here tonight or watching by video, then you are cognizant enough to know that there is a war on our public schools. School boards across this country, and even in the state of Arkansas, are dealing with the encroachment of radical ideology in our schools, classrooms, and clubs. Thank you, Conway School Board, for your relentless work to protect our institution so that our school can focus on fundamentals of education. Most community members are aware of the clear and decisive way agendas are being pushed down the throats of our nation's young people. The public school should never be the replacement for parents, nor the influence of morality or play the role as a mental health advisor in the lives and minds of our children and youth. I am thankful this board is recognizing the war we are fighting and are taking the necessary common sense steps to protect every child, whatever it takes. We appreciate everyone sitting up here today for your service and devotion to do the best. You have tremendous support from this community. Thank you.
Stephen Dixon?
I hope that I can time my speech the way that she did. That was perfect timing. Give thanks for things to do. Thank you for that. I just want to start again by saying thank you all. And I want to encourage you by repeating much of the encouragement that's already been spoken tonight. And I want to share with you an inescapable reality, and that is God is watching. So the motivation for all of you should be that, that God is watching, not just some empty morality or some sort of empty conservatism. Conservativism is not a word, by the way, for all the teachers that in here. Conservatism. So when it comes to the Word of God, God infallibly spoke, "God created them, man and woman." And some of the policies that you've had have reflected that, that God creates students, men and women. And y'all have aligned your policies for that. And I want to remind you that any sort of policy that goes against that reality, that God created the man and woman, is not good. Because God himself looked at the creation and said that it is good. So please stand for that. Number two, I want to remind you not to grow weary in doing good. It's easy to grow weary in doing good when there's a lot of pushback from our community. Don't grow weary in this. It's been pointed out that there's been articles that have said in a condescending manner that this is the only school district I know that has these sort of policies. That should be something that you are proud of in a humble way. As a man who has graduated from a high school that had 30 students, Guy Perkins, about 20 miles north of here, I can tell you that Guy Perkins is looking to this school district. Greenbrier High School is looking to this school district. You are setting a tone for other school districts in Arkansas. Please don't grow weary in doing good because God is watching. Number three, not only is it a reality that God is watching, which is your motivation, but it is also true, in the Word of God, it says that God is love. So the God who created man and woman, who created masculinity for the man, for femininity for the woman, he is also doing that and working for us in love. God is love. And so to go against his design, to go against his natural law, to go against common sense that he has given, is opposite of love because he is love. And you should stand for that because God is love. You're going to be pressured and say, "How dare you? How unloving of you?" But the truth is, for you to stand for that is loving because God designed it that way. And God is love. And again, to close my time, God is watching. Thank you for this time.
John Lynch?
Hi. I'd like to start my three minutes with a sincere thank you to the school board for making policies, decisions that are developmentally appropriate for our students and that keep students safe. In an environment where others have felt it necessary to bow down to loud but fringe ideologies, you have given teachers and students license to maintain their focus on what school is about. Academic learning, critical thinking, and laying a foundation for pursuing successful career paths. Thank you for running to fill these seats and introducing common sense into a hectic and vitriol-filled educational landscape. All of you who were elected last year are showing a trait rarely found in modern public office holders. You're sticking to the promises you ran on. I remember your campaigns and the values you espoused. I appreciate you avoiding milquetoast apathy towards our students for the sake of ease, taking time away from your families to receive training and boldly speaking truth. Furthermore, the decisions you've made demonstrate an understanding that parents have the right to know what their children are being taught and what information or misinformation is available to them. You all clearly understand that parents, and not the state, are where the buck should stop regarding what their, what children are taught, when they're introduced to it, and how they are exposed to it. Parents should play a vital role in the upbringing and education of their children. It is widely accepted that they have the right to be actively involved in their children's education. This includes having the right to determine what their kids are taught in school. As primary caregivers, parents possess valuable insight into their children's unique needs, values, and aspirations. They are best positioned to make informed decisions regarding the curriculum they're exposed to and extracurricular activities that align with their family's beliefs and goals. Recognizing parents' authority and shaping their children's educational experience fosters a good relationship between schools and families, ensuring a more personalized and effective learning environment. By honoring parents' right to determine what their kids are taught, we empower them to actively engage in their children's education, promoting a well-rounded development and nurturing a sense of shared responsibility in preparing the next generation for a successful future. At the end of the day, this is about kids. I pored over the minutes and the recordings of prior school board meetings. I took stock of the recent actions made by this board. I took stock of the recent comments made by other citizens. When humans are involved, there are mistakes made. While nobody is perfect, this board has clearly shown that they desire to make Conway Schools better for our children.
Owen Strachan? I messed that up, I'm sorry.
Nobody gets it right, my man. It's all good. Stran is how you say it. My name is Owen Stran, and I am the Provost of Grace Bible Theological Seminary here in Conway and a member of Grace Bible Church right here in Conway. And it's my joy to speak to you tonight and to thank you as a board for the stands that you have taken on a number of very hot-button issues. You've showed real courage. I know that you've been called unloving as a result of the stances you have taken on transgenderism, wokeness, critical race theory, books and libraries, and some other matters. But what I would like to very quickly say as a Christian theologian is that you are definitely not unloving for those stands that you have taken. Love in the Bible, according to Matthew 2234 to 39, is defined by the first commandment and the second greatest commandment. The first commandment is that you should love your God with all your heart, soul, mind, and strength. The second commandment is that you should love your neighbor as yourself. The two commandments cannot be broken apart. The first commandment is to love God. The second commandment to love neighbor depends upon loving God. You don't love God any way you see fit. You love God according to the Word of God and the Gospel of God. So we don't approach God and define our faith. We approach God in order to repent and receive Christ's mercies shown through the, through the cross of Jesus Christ. So I would simply say, the allegation that you have been unloving in, in these different actions, these policies you've taken, protecting students on trips and protecting students in bathrooms, for example, that is, that is the height of love in a public sense. What you have done is loving. It is good. It is right for my daughter in a, in a public setting, let's not say school, but just a public setting in general, to not have men go into the restroom after her, or a little boy to go into the restroom after her. I have a nine-year-old daughter, about this tall, precious little girl. It is right to protect girls from boys. Now, those boys may be confused. They may be from difficult circumstances. They may need real care. They need love. They need compassion. They need the Gospel of Jesus Christ like I need, like we all need. We all need to be born again in the name of Jesus Christ. That is the greatest need any person on planet Earth has. So it's not a matter of being against children who think of themselves as transgender or something like that. We're for them. We want their good. But the way to work for their good is not to open up the restroom of the opposite sex to them. And furthermore, wokeness as an ideology teaches ultimately, if you really break it down, that white people are white supremacists. That's where the ideology goes. And that's a very divisive and hateful ideology at its core. So you have done, at least in my humble judgment as a, as a Christian man and theologian, you have done the right thing. And you've taken stance. And I would just say, that is the height of love for a Christian. God bless you, and I'm thankful for you.
Lena McMahon?
Good evening. Thank you so much for your time and your willingness to listen. This is my 28th year to teach. 26 of those have been in Conway, the last 18 at the junior high. I am retiring this year from my profession. I'm so sorry that I have left, even though I'm not physically or financially ready. This fact completely overshadows what should be a time of bittersweet celebration, but I have to consider my health. This year in particular, I have experienced significant spikes in my blood pressure as a direct result of student behavioral issues. Here is an excerpt from my letter that was addressed to all of you that will explain why. The reason I'm retiring is lack of discipline. I feel like I'm trying to do a job that I'm extremely good at and qualified for, but I can no longer do it effectively because of students who are constantly allowed to stay in the classroom or come back to the classroom after a meaningless consequence and then continue to totally disrupt. We have lowered our expectations for learning content and are focused on their social, emotional well-being to the detriment of the majority of students who do exactly what they're supposed to do. Sadly, these students are ignored while we try to save the others, which leaves me feeling stressed, anxious, unsafe, and scared. I know I'm not alone in the way I feel or the things I see, but sadly, I must accept that nothing I say will affect change. That's the end of the excerpt. I know there is a message circulating the community that teachers are leaving because of this school board. That is not the truth and is being spread with intent to discredit them and further an agenda. The message and agenda that I'm referring to are coming from the candidates opposing Mrs. Cunningham and Mr. Milburn. I've seen the ad of these opposing candidates promoting less discipline and more social, emotional learning. This is absolutely not the solution. Dr. Naylor, I so appreciate your comments at the last school board meeting about wanting to address the issue of discipline. Please start with the junior high. Please ask to see actual discipline referrals of students and their respective consequences. Look closely at repeat offenders and decide for yourself if you think the current discipline process is working. I have a copy for each of you of this transcript, a small data sample from this year, and my retirement letter. Thank you so much.
Scotty Keller?
Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity of speaking to all of you. I'm Scotty Keller. I graduated from Conway High School many years ago. This school board, like many others around the state and country, faces many challenges. One of them is the fact that children's greeting, reading levels are considerably lower than desired. Some quoted as low as 37% of the children read at grade level. 37%. Several of these dedicated board members initiated a program to help address the challenge. Linda Hargis, Jennifer Cunningham, Cindy Naylor have been instrumental in this program. Thank you for doing that work. I just wanted to thank you publicly for that. I am a volunteer in that program, along with several others, some in this room right now. The realization that if children have trouble reading in their early lives, they will have difficulty in all aspects of their schooling and later on. Given a minimal amount of our time, 30 minutes a week, we can, which is not a difficult thing to do, to interact with them one-on-one is certainly not a difficult allocation of time. The teacher gives us information that we, that we use to, to, to deal with the child. I find it personally rewarding and would encourage others to volunteer. When many find time to complain, I hope more people can find time to be a part of the solution instead of the problem. Volunteering to help children who may one day leave this city, our state, or possibly even the world, it's, it's something we can do. These board members are giving their time and talent with no monetary gain in an effort to help children. This is a way many of us can help a child. And I do want to thank all of you for your efforts. Thank you so much.
I bet I get this name right. Bill Clemens?
Thank you. Some of you may not know, but I just got off the board a couple of years ago. Thank you, Doc. And I know how difficult it is to be a board member. You can't please all the people all the time. You can't even please some of the people all the time. I have hard enough time just pleasing my wife some of the time. Sorry for my voice. I've got a upper respiratory issue, but it's good. Board, let's talk a minute about your superintendent. He is a bold risk-taker. With your guidance, he's done some things that I've never seen in the history of our Conway Public Schools. I've been here a long time, 41 years. And I'm not from Conway originally, but I'm a Whoppas Cat. And I'm proud of every one of these people in this room who are willing to care enough about Conway Public Schools to share their opinions and their heart. But Jeff was hired out of Texas, and I've almost forgiven him because he's from Texas. But I have a son-in-law also in Texas, and I forgive him too, forgiving him too. But Jeff's brought some amazing things to this community. We needed some change. We were due for some change, and it's hard. Change is not easy. It's not easy trying to realign your administration. It's not easy trying to take care of your principals and administrators. But the bottom line is, you have a vision board, and he takes care of what your vision is. Education's messy, just like raising a family. It's messy. There's things that go on that you'll never know about, but behind those doors, you've got to take care of those issues. And that's just the way it is. And Jeff is bold enough to do that. We need to appreciate the fact that we have one of the best school systems in the state of Arkansas. Despite what people say, the media, and I have to turn the TV off when I see facts that aren't accurate, especially about Conway Public Schools. It's one of the top 10 schools in the state. I will never be ashamed of that. I've been a coach, and I've been replaced, and I've replaced coaches. And then that's hard when you're working for somebody and you have to go or you need to go or you have an opportunity to go. It's not a bad thing, but I want to appreciate that. There's a saying that it's the same boiling water that softens the potato that hardens the egg. And today, we need to keep our lines firm and consistent and fair. But you also need, just like the potato, you need to treat people softly with a heart, burden of humility, and understanding for those that are stressing. Be firm like the egg, but be soft like the potato. It's the same boiling water. Thank you.
My name is David Jones. Our family has lived in Conway since 1979. Our two sons are Conway High graduates, and they've gone on to make a living, doing just fine. Dr. Column, thank you for your leadership. It's already been expressed tonight in the level of professionalism you are providing to this Conway School Board. All of us appreciate that and the Conway School System. President Ackland, thank you for accepting the responsibility and fulfilling the duties of Board President during these perilous times. You've taken on a lot of pressure, a lot of responsibility. Mr. Milburn, you were chosen by the Board as the best qualified for your position from 21 applicants, and that's a big compliment to you. As a Conway High graduate and father of Conway graduates and grandfather of Conway graduates, in 27 years of experience in law enforcement with the Conway Police Department, you bring invaluable experience to the Board, especially in the field of school safety. We all know how important that is these days. Ms. Cunningham, a Conway High graduate, a mother of a Conway High graduate and a Conway High student, you have committed yourself as a school board member to continue to put whatever time is necessary to improve our Conway Schools and improve the education of Conway students. Your invaluable service on the Board is greatly appreciated, and it's my hope that you and Mr. Milburn will continue serving on the Conway School Board. Ms. Hargis, Mr. Sandifer, Dr. Naylor, Mr. Leach, thank you to each of you for the countless hours you contribute in service to all the Conway students, faculty, staff, and administration. We appreciate your hours of service, and we understand this is time taken away from your families. And the actual pay for this service is not a whole lot of money, as I understand it. They could be doing other things, but they're here, thank goodness. You are all individuals of utmost integrity, and we appreciate your dedicated service to this Board and the Conway School System. And in closing, I would add this. If you were all running for election, reelection tomorrow, you would certainly have my vote, and I would campaign for every one of you as hard as I could go. Thank you. I guess my turn was up.
At this time, I want to give the Board an opportunity. If you all have any comments, I want to give you that opportunity.
About anything? I just, there's been some concerns about the number of resignations in the district and the reason for those resignations. There's been some concerns about the National Merit Scholarship Program being dumied down or not in good shape in Conway. And the AP, College Board AP Program being, I think the word was dismantled that I heard. So, I just would like to share a couple of things. I did quite a bit of research on the resignations and why people resigned. Talked to a lot of them. Other people told me. So, here's what I found, and this covers about half of the resignations that are on here tonight. There may be three or four that it doesn't cover. Out of 33 teachers, 17 are retiring. Got some of the reasons. Had my years in, it's time to go. Many said the kids are out of control, just can't deal with it anymore. Some said they can't address the mental stability of kids, that they're not counselors, they're teachers. And a couple said they're tired of rules not being followed and dress code, you know, and that's kind of simple. But anyway, six took jobs outside of education. One is working for one of the largest financial institutes in this nation. So, I can't imagine why she would give up her salary here for that. Another one took a job at Conway Regional, and the other ones I don't know, but I do know those two. Two are choosing to stay home with their children. Three got jobs out of state, or their husbands got jobs out of state. Two took a job where they actually live rather than having to drive back and forth. Two took jobs in their hometown because they want to go back where they grew up. And one said just plain tired of chaos, whatever that means. The administration, four retired, two moved for job promotions, and we have two counselors, and I'm assuming it was on SIR funds, that they had one-year contracts, that there wasn't any choice there. And so, from 2019 to 2020, we had 99 resignations. 20 to 21, we had 88. 21, 22, we had 80. 22, 23, 89. So, this year is right in line with all the years. National merit. Little bit of background, the PSAT test is given in the 11th grade, and it determines the semifinalists and finalists for the National Merit Scholarships. Prior to this year, what Conway has done is to give the PSAT to 10th graders, and it's kind of a practice run for the tests that they take as 11th grader. They have a boot camp in the summertime between their 10th and 11th year where they are coached and mentored in the tests they're going to take. The problem has been that we're not identifying kids with the propensity to do well on this test early enough. So, right after I got on the Board, I don't think it was maybe a week, Brad Lacy called me and asked if he could meet with me, and he said, "Linda, I need help." And I said, "Well, how can I help you?" And he said, "I just can't get Conway to buy in to what we want to do with the National Merit Program." And I said, "Well, what do you want me to do?" He said, "I want you to find me somebody to talk to." So, I said, "Well, I can't imagine Dr. Column turning down money for a program." So, I said, "Why don't you get with him? I'll tell him you're coming. You call him, and you all get together." And that's what they did, and they formed a partnership. And Dr. Woosley, I think, is the one that kind of oversaw that and worked out all of the details in it. And what it is, is the Chamber with funds from the Toad Suck Days Emerging Scholars Program has offered three things to our National Merit Program. The first one, which is huge, is they are going to test any 8th grader that wants to be tested in this district. They're going to test any 9th grader that wants to be tested in this district. 10th graders are already covered in the district. So, these kids are going to get to take that test three times before they actually take it for the scholarships. And that, from my perspective, is huge. The next thing, I guess that's the third thing they're going to do, is to offer an additional boot camp in the summer so that these kids will have a choice. You know, if you've got one, if they can't come, then that's it. So, they're going to have two choices to attend this boot camp. This year, there were 318 8th graders that took this test, and this is phenomenal. 122 scored in the 85 percentile or above, and this was compared nationally. I mean, it really just kind of gives me chills to think that we've got that many students doing that well. And when we take this group of 122 and we nurture them and mentor them through the next four years, we're going to have amazing results for the National Merit Scholarships. So, let me give you where we are now. The top five schools in the state, and these are averages over a 10-year period. Bentonville is 12.5. That means 12.5, I don't know how you have a half a kid, but that have National Merit Scholarships. Central has 14.4. This was the most interesting one to me because in the very first year, it was 2014, they had 24. And then it just kind of went down from 17 all the way down to seven, and then in 2022, it jumped up to 29. And then in 20, it's back down to eight. Now, I don't know how that happens, but it did. Fayetteville has 11.5. Conway has 6.2. And Cabot has 6.1. So, I'm saying at the end of four years, we're going to be on the top of this list. The AP Program, I'm going to let, I asked Paula Harris the other day if she would just get up and very briefly explain what our AP Program is because it was changed in 2021. Is that correct? And, you know, everybody, I guess, got upset about it. I don't know. But when I look at it, that was a home run. I would have supported that in a minute because it's really good and it's a lot better than it was. So, if you would do that, I would really appreciate it. Sure. Oh, you don't want to. Hey, Jason said go to the microphone.
While Paula's coming, I'll just, for the Board's benefit too, it's early, and I don't want to still thunder because Dr. Woosley told me not to. But I will say, early looks appear that we could almost double that National Merit number, and so, we're already moving the bar. I'm excited about that. It's coming.
It is exciting. We have a lot of good things going on in the district. So, several years ago, probably about four years ago, College Board communicated to the state, who then communicated to the districts, that they were going to reclaim pre-AP. And so, in the past, districts could just offer whatever pre-AP classes they wanted using whatever curriculum that they wanted. Teachers were required to go to trainings for strategies and sometimes got really good resources to use in those classes and things like that. Well, College Board has changed it now to where you have to pay to take their courses. And so, we looked at it because if it was money that was worth the investment, you know, all of our decisions, we look at through the lens of students first. It was a brand-new program. You had to apply to pilot it, and there were a few schools who did, but they didn't, they only offered about six to eight options. We currently, or at that time, offered 26 courses where we had teachers trained in the strategies to teach these students to prepare them for AP courses. And they just offered six or eight, and you had to sign on for at least two. And so, we decided to wait. Conway doesn't usually jump real early on new shiny things because we like to make sure that they're going to be worth our time and worth our students. So, we waited. Then it came out that the state was going to pay for it, so we took another look at it again. But it had a lot of guidelines. You had to use their curriculum, and we couldn't see what it was. You had to use their tests and their performance tasks. The teachers had to write a course audit for pre-AP classes the way the high school AP teachers have to write, and that's a really big ordeal, ordeal, that they have to go through. And so, we talked about it. We had several meetings about it with administrators, and we decided, we're just going to continue with the advanced offerings that we offer here now, but we're going to work on stronger vertical alignment with our AP classes to make sure we're really getting them the quality that the students need and the rigor that they need to be prepared to take those AP classes and make those AP exam scores that they need. We did purchase a College Board curriculum called Spring Board, but they were for grades six, seven, and eight ELA only, and College Board doesn't even offer pre-AP classes for those grades. And that has proven to be a very rigorous curriculum, much more so than our students and teachers have been prepared for, and we do plan to roll that up to ninth and 10th grade ELA this next school year. I don't know what else you want. If you have any questions, though, I'm happy to.
Am I correct in that if you had kept, or if we had kept pre-AP, that every single student in that grade had to take pre-AP?
Yes, ma'am. That was probably one of the biggest things that turned us off about it. Thank you for reminding me of that. For example, if we offered ninth grade pre-AP English 1, every ninth grade student would have had to have taken that course. grade ELA this next school year. I don't know what else you want, if you have any questions, though, I'm happy to.
Am I correct in that if you had kept, or if we had kept pre-AP, that every single student in that grade had to take pre-AP?
Yes, ma'am. That was probably one of the biggest things that turned us off about it. Thank you for reminding me of that. For example, if we offered ninth grade pre-AP English 1, every ninth grade student would have had to have taken that course unless they were in a resource course. And we just did not think that was what was best for Conway's students.
Thank you.
And to my knowledge, there hasn't been any complaints from parents or the community about this, so I was a little surprised when I was questioned about it because we're always willing to listen and investigate more.
Thank you so much.
Thanks, Paula.
I'm done. I'm done.
I just want to say thank you, Linda. That's pretty impressive, all those stats, and I know you put a lot of time into that. That's not something that you just pop up and get in five minutes. So I want to thank you. That was an impressive presentation.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'll add as well, thank you, Linda. And it should be obvious, but the things that we're trying to work on here, turning around reading scores, improving National Merit things, these don't happen overnight. They don't happen in 12 months. It takes time to do this in a large district. You're seeing that, your understanding activity has been happening for a while. We're looking to see improvements on those, but it doesn't happen overnight. That should be an obvious thing, but I just want to point that out. So thank you.
I just want to take a quick second and say thank you. In case y'all didn't know, next week is Teacher Appreciation Week, and so we owe all of the teachers in our district a huge thank you. They are boots on the ground, day in, day out, dealing with these students, teaching them, learning them, loving them. Also, let's thank our administrators. Y'all are boots on the ground as well. We need y'all to make this district happen every single day, day in and day out. And I think we did it last month. We may have mentioned our SROs, but we love y'all, we thank y'all, y'all do an amazing job. Thank you.
I'd just like to say mainly thank you for the positive input. You don't ever know what you're gonna hear when you sit up here and listen to patron comments. I appreciate the silent majority standing up and speaking. Thank you very much.
I was just gonna say, Dr. Ashley, this doesn't always go like this. For your first meeting.
Trip? You wanna close out, you the preacher? Well, at this time, the board will now go into executive session to discuss a personnel issue.
She thinks this is a came down school book, yearbook. She needs to see mine at the house. Look like a bunch of mug shots.
We had good yearbooks.
Yeah, that's what I just said.
I'm thankful for that. Yes, it was.
Did a cool front move in while we were on site?
Yes, I'm telling you.
I had to get them black. No, they don't make them. They don't make them black. They're white soles.
Really?
Well, I got these look like records.
Yeah.
That won't turn off, will it? No, that's only bad. I just need it for the knee.
Yeah, no doubt.
I can share.
It's the last slide.
I've got that black in my eye. It's still, it's the rip off.
You good? You good?
Yeah, just waiting on. Okay, board, we're back in session and the board took no action in executive session and so at this time I just need a motion to adjourn.
I'll tell no.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.